And welcome to the Longview, May 10th, 2012, Longview City Council. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Reverend Bo Sullivan of Holy Trinity Community Church. Would you please stand?
Please join with me in bowing in prayer. Merciful and loving Heavenly Father, we thank you for your blessings of freedom, safety, and life. We recognize that every blessing we have, each and every breath, comes from you and is a gift of your grace. We recognize that all of our resources at our disposal originate from you, and we are simply stewards, entrusted with their use, and accountable for the good administration of them. I pray then, in light of your magnificent grace towards us, that you would grant this council wisdom and give them the courage to act on that wisdom. Give them discernment to know what is your good and perfect will for this, the city of Longview. Protect the weak and the defenseless, and let all of us both seek your justice and love your mercy. Let the policies and the administration of this council seek to benefit everyone in the city, regardless of age, race, gender, or economic class. And while there may be differences of opinion, let each one be united with a desire to do good and the willingness to work together towards that end. In the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, we pray, and by your Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
Now, please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Okay, council, first item tonight is our citizen comment. I have a speaker card somewhere up here, but I know who it is. Natalie Rabakoff. Well, you can end it. Come on up, Natalie.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm coming here for something that I know will be a big surprise, the train. I want to thank you, each one of you, for voting to get the train station, the restoration going, and the whole nine yards, because a couple of weeks ago, our city staff, it was, I believe, it started with Kasia, because Dietrich and I started brainwashing her a long time ago. And when she found out, taking her to our meetings and whatnot with Daryl, and she caught the bite that I've had been working with, and she invited Amtrak to come. But she didn't just invite them, she nurtured it and stayed in touch with them. And this will explain to you, from Chris Jagodowski, he's the general manager of the east for Amtrak in the east coast. He thanked me for everything that was done, and he said, "As always, Longview came out for Amtrak. A lot of folks ask us inside Amtrak about why we should go there, but I never had any doubt in my mind how this would turn out with you and everyone else in town behind us. It was our pleasure being there, and we can't wait to come back when our schedule permits." I mean, this is what I've been doing for 16 years, and nobody ever wanted to listen, and I'm so thrilled that so many of y'all are finding out. I mean, Daryl's been the only one really as my liaison. And then I got another one that said, from the gentleman that was on the train, the train master, and his name is Stephen Ostrowski. And he said, "Even without the Friday event with the schoolchildren, we edged Meridian, Mississippi out by a handful," I believe. Now, Meridian, their ex-mayor has been the president of the board of Amtrak a few years ago, and they really go crazy. And I was thrilled when I found that part out. And this is what he wrote, he didn't just send it to me, he sent it to corporate, too. He said, "The city pulled out all the stops, having a wonderful event, face painters, a bouncy bounce, numerous vendors, live music, free food, wonderful people. This was a great event. Friday evening's event hosted by the city of Longview on the Warren and Evelyn Henry cars was a great way to meet all the people involved in making this event so successful. Kasia and Dietrich deserve a big round of applause for their efforts." And let me tell you, Dietrich worked his fanny off. He worked really, really hard. You may not have ever worked with him like I have, but he really, and because I was staying in touch with him as a grandma from Arizona for the whole month, and I couldn't be here to help him. And you really, really have an angel with him. And working with Laura and the rest of her staff, this city should really be thanking everybody, because they pulled off an amazing event. Then the last one I got, I got today, I've been waiting to get something. And this came from the woman named Fran Burke, she's in the governmental affairs. And she told me, "I wanted to know the final count. This train's been going all year long, all around America, all these big cities. They never had us on the radar screen for Longview, Texas." And she put, "The final count for Longview came in at 4,145. The stop after Longview was Toledo, Ohio. We beat them, they came in with 4,048. During the year, Longview was only beat by Strasburg with 4,174. That's 29 more people went to their event than Longview, Texas, and we weren't even in the running." And she said, "I don't have a number for last year's National Train Day in Washington, DC, but it probably will be close to 8,000, so I would say, 'Longview did a first-class job on getting the community notified, involved, and aware of Amtrak.'" And I think each one of you should be really proud, and I appreciated what the city manager came out on the Friday night event, I appreciated Mr. Frost coming out, and Daryl was there, and I didn't see some others, I'm sorry, because I came in from the airport to go to that thing. But I have, the people that I've crossed paths with were exhilarated, and we saw all stratas of Longview. And it's something I've really waited for a long time, and I think we're on a really roll. And when we get the restored station, I think it's going to be gangbusters. And the last thing that I will tell you, first of all, I would like to thank Daryl, because I know he's going off. And you have been a real support team for me, and I really appreciate the way you've come to the meetings.
Excuse me a second, Natalie. Counsel, her time's up, do we want to give her addition? Okay, go ahead, Natalie.
Thank you, I'll be quick. But I really want to thank you for all that you've done, and you're leaving it in good hands with Kasia. And we'll have both, we'll have you as a volunteer now. And the last thing is, when I have told you that, and nobody understood me, whether I was going to Letco meetings in the early days, and that was the only citizen's comment I could get up and tell them about the train, the good or the bad things, I'd always tell them, "It'd give us good exposure." Well, we got exposure like I never thought that expected, and it was that weekend. There was a little Chinaman filming, and I went over to him, I could tell he was from Asia. And I welcomed him to Longview, and I started asking him what company he was with, what paper or whatever, and he couldn't talk. So he motioned me to follow him, and I talked to the lady that he motioned me to. It comes out that this is a news agency from Beijing, China. Their home office is in Houston, in Sugar Land, and she was putting it on her TV station, so we got some international exposure.
Great, great, great. Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you for your time.
I always love Natalie's definition of quick. Natalie, I know, I know, maybe sometimes you don't get enough credit, but we do appreciate. But I guarantee you, I've been on the council since 1998, and I've heard and felt your passion. And I don't think anybody will deny that since about 2005 or so, we've been very focused. This council's been focused, staff's been focused, and I think you're seeing the results of the ridership because of that focus. So I want to thank everybody for that. Okay, I don't have any other speaker cards. Is there anybody else here that'd like to make a comment? Okay, then we'll move on to the first item. First item of presentation items, and Item A is a presentation of a proclamation celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Grecton Longview Rotary Club. Who's going to come up for this one? Y'all don't know who y'all dealing with, with that club over there, that's Rusty. Y'all, let's turn around this way. And we have a number of our Rotary Club members here today. With the members of the Grecton Rotary Club, please stand up so we can recognize all of you. Thank y'all very much. And there's only one deal now, when we finish this presentation, y'all can't leave, because our chamber's going to empty, so, just kidding. Okay, so this is a celebration of the 50th anniversary of the Grecton Longview Rotary Club, May 8th, 2012. City of Longview proclaims May 8th, 2012, as the 50th anniversary of the Grecton Longview Rotary Club. The club was chartered in 1962, and throughout its 50-year history, has been devoted to helping charitable organizations in Gregg County. Rotary's popularity has continued to grow throughout the world. Its mission has expanded beyond its original professional and social interests to work with communities in need. Today, Texas has 488 clubs with more than 30,000 members with three clubs here in Longview. So therefore, I, Jay Dean, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Longview, hereby proclaim May 8th, 2012, as the 50th anniversary of Grecton Longview Rotary in Longview. President Dave Wright.
On behalf of the Longview, the Longview Grecton Rotary Club, I would like to thank you for recognizing us for our 50 years here in Longview. And I'd also like to thank you and the council for the work that you did out at the rodeo arena with the new stands, because of your support. We had a fantastic rodeo this year. On Saturday night, we had over 4,000 people. We didn't have to worry about the stands collapsing, which was very nice.
That's a good thing.
That was very nice. We had over 4,000 people, and it was great. We raised, we raised 40,000, we raised over $40,000, and now I've given about a half million dollars back to the community because of the rodeo. So once again, I want to thank you for recognizing us and for all of your support. I hope to see all of you back here in another 50 years.
Maybe you, I see you working out. Look, before y'all go, we have something else, I think, that's very appropriate. And I have to confess that I am a member and a proud member of the Longview Grecton Rotary Club. But since becoming a member, one thing I learned pretty quick was, Mr. Rusty Roberts, who loves to collect our money for our tickets, you never know what really to expect from Rusty. And he's always been sort of the life of the meetings and keeps us all in order. So we wanted to give a little special something to Mr. Rusty, which is a key to the city, and it's presented in recognition of and the appreciation of a dedicated member of the Longview Grecton Rotary Club. This key is presented to Rusty Roberts. Rusty Roberts has had perfect, perfect attendance for 50 years as a member of Rotary. What door, what door does it work on? It works, it works on the safe. So if you can get through the door, you can get to the safe, Rusty. No, it's good. God bless you, Rusty, we sure appreciate you, buddy. Thank you for all you do. Thank you, buddy, appreciate it. Yes, sir. Okay, y'all want to come up here and take a picture? All right, hold on, Russ. Want Russ's family to come up, and we'll take a picture. Come right here, Russ. I don't want to, I don't want to mess up. Come on over here.
Does that go to the bag, or what?
Yeah, that's to the safe.
I'd be proud of there, Rusty.
Welcome, well deserved.
Natalie, where you going? Boy, that thing's going sideways.
It's a grand child to him, boy, Natalie. Thank you.
Okay, we have another proclamation for Van Cliburn, Lynette Gudson. Hello, Ms. Lynette. I don't see your running buddy in here tonight.
No, just me.
Well, that's good, we always love having you.
And the symphony.
And the symphony. Oh, the symphony want to stand up so we can recognize the symphony's here tonight? All right, thank y'all for being here. We've got to move over to the center of the dais. Want to get our better side. Okay, this is the Van Cliburn proclamation dated May 12th, 2012. Van Cliburn was born in Shreveport in 1934 and moved his family to Kilgore when he was three years old. Van Cliburn achieved worldwide recognition in 1958 at the age of 23, when he won the first quadrennial international piano competition in Moscow at the height of the Cold War. In 1962, he established the International Van Cliburn Piano Competition, which now attracts outstanding young pianists from all over the world. The Longview Symphony is indeed pleased to celebrate the legacy of this native son by featuring the current Van Cliburn Piano Competition winner in concert on the Longview Symphony's season finale concert on May the 12th. So therefore, I, Jay Dean, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Longview, do hereby proclaim May 12th, 2012, as Van Cliburn's concert date in Longview. Very special. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Dean, and thanks to the city council. Thank you for your ongoing support with the hotel occupancy grants. It does make a difference, and we appreciate this very much.
Thank you, and thank you for all the symphony does, too. Thank y'all. Okay, we have our friend Ms. Kathy Case here tonight. On Tourism Week. How are you tonight?
I'm good, how are you?
How's the oysters?
They're great.
All right.
You can have some.
I want to make sure.
All right.
It is that time of the year, though, right?
Oh, they're good all the time.
Good, yeah, but I mean, you know, I'm from Louisiana, too, so. Okay, we're talking about National Tourism Week, May 5th through the 13th. The first full week of May is annually recognized as National Travel and Tourism Week. Localized events are presented in cities, states, and travel businesses nationwide that champion the power of travel. Travel and tourism is America's largest services export industry. Each U.S. household would pay $1,055 more in taxes without the tax revenue generated by the travel and tourism industry. Measured through spending, jobs, tax revenues, visitor arrivals, world perception, or quality of life, travel and tourism is one of America's greatest assets. Therefore, I, Jay Dean, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Longview, do hereby proclaim May 5th through the 13th as National Tourism Week in Longview. Thank you very much. Do you have some of your people here?
I want to thank you so very much. I'm accepting this on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce, and we want to thank you all very much. Any other board members here? Kelly, there's Kelly, okay. And want you all to know how much we appreciate all that you've done and all that you continue to do to help us with tourism, because it is a fantastic industry, and this weekend will be great with Alley Fest, we'll have lots of tourists. So thank you again very much.
Thank you. Keep those oysters hot. Well, I like those hot ones. Okay, Salvation Army Week. We have Captain Guy Watts, Willie Simpson, and Terry Owens. Come on up here, guys. Terry, how you doing?
I'm fine.
Good to see you. Hadn't seen you in a while, man, how you been? Former longtime Longview employee. Do we have a third person, you going to be the picture taker?
I'm just the photographer.
Oh, gosh, okay, well, y'all come on over here a little bit, y'all not to be shy. Okay, Salvation Army Week, May 13th through the 18th. The Salvation Army has provided humanitarian relief and spiritual guidance to people throughout the community in Longview. Its members continue the compassionate tradition of helping wherever there's hunger, disease, and loss of hope. Many dedicated and committed volunteers and staff help provide an array of social service programs focused on assisting families and individuals. The service agency uses a holistic approach to provide services to people with physical, mental, and emotional needs, free of charge to everyone. So therefore, I, Jay Dean, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Longview, do hereby proclaim May 13th through the 18th, 2012, as Salvation Army Week in Longview. And guys, let me, let me tell you how appreciative we are in the city of Longview for the Salvation Army. We have lots of nonprofits that do some amazing work, but one of the things that really struck me was last summer, when we were going through the drought, and we came up with the idea of the Beat the Heat program to try to get, you know, some air conditioning to some of our less fortunate people in the community. You guys were one of the groups to step up and, hey, we're in, and what do we need to do to help? And y'all did a fantastic job, so thank y'all very much. Okay. Okay, I guess we're going to go now to, oh, we have another appreciation. Well, that one, E's gone, and so we got an F. We got an F. It's a presentation of appreciation to Councilman Daryl Williams from the Longview Fireman's Relief and Retirement Fund for dedicated service to the board from 2004 through 2012. We got Colby Beckham. Mr. Williams.
Mr. Williams, we just wanted to give you this certificate of appreciation for your dedicated service to the board of the Longview Fireman's Relief and Retirement Fund from 2004 to 2012. Due to the end of your term coming up, you can't run again, so it made it where you couldn't serve on our board, and I wanted to thank you very much, from myself as the chairman of the pension board, and all the fire department, and all the firemen that you've represented and helped through those years for all your dedicated service.
Thank you. Good job, Daryl. Okay, now we're going to move over to our discussion item, a discussion of the FY 11-12 mid-year budget estimates. David Willard, you going to do that here or up at the podium?
I'll just do that.
Okay. And counsel, I think we each have a mid-year budget review sheet.
Thank you, Mayor and council, you do have a presentation there before you, we'll go through that. This, hard to believe, it's already mid-year from FY 11 and 12, which seems like just yesterday, October 1st was here, but it's already time to start in preparation for the 12 and 13 budget, which staff is beginning to put together. Before we do that, you'll also have a memorandum that we've placed at your desk. I think the mayor will have more to say about that in a minute, about our schedule for the budget this summer. Of course, we're going to be beginning, really, about the end of this month with staff preparations for budget, but these are dates that are set, a lot of them by state statute requiring council to address the budget and tax rate and so forth. So we're giving these out very early, to please ask you to mark on your calendars and...
You're stealing my thunder.
Well, you'll say more about that, I'm sure, later. And anyway, the mayor will have some more to say about that, but that's that memorandum. Mid-year budget forecast, Sean, we'll go ahead and start. Just to recap, and we won't spend much time on some of these, but this was the year-end estimate of what we'll spend in all funds for 2011 and 2012. Of course, our budget year will end at the end of this September, so our total budget's $155,226,387. Tonight, we're just going to focus primarily on the general fund. Of course, this is the fund that is funded by taxpayer dollars primarily, sales tax and abhorrent tax, along with some others. We'll look at the water and sewer fund briefly, and then the other funds are the special revenue, internal service, and debt service funds, which are pretty standard, and we won't spend a lot of time unless you have some specific questions on that. General fund, this is just a recap of the revenue and sources of our funds for the general fund. And you'll see in the red block represents sales tax. We're estimating that, this is what we estimated we would have in. And of course, it represents 35% plus of our budgeted revenue source. And then the blue square, block is, represents 33%, which is nearly $20 million for abhorrent tax. This, I want to talk a little bit about sales tax. That's probably our most public thing we get every month, and of course, the newspaper reports on that, and it's a very important piece of our revenue stream. This graph shows, in the first block, you'll see it's by month, and the first block is 2010, 2011. This is what we collected last year, last budget year, by month in sales taxes. The next block, 2011 and 2012, you'll see our actual collections through May, through yesterday's collection, and then from June down through September. Those are projections that we are projecting we'll collect the next few months of the budget year. The other block represents the change, of course, from year to year, and the change associated with it, either positive or negative from the previous year. You'll see the first two months of this budget year, we started out really with a bang, nearly 8% up the first month, and nearly 6% up the next month. Then we started to flatten out a little bit, and you can see those numbers there. Two months ago, we came back up a little bit, and then the last two months were down from what we had predicted. You'll see this May, yesterday, we had a collection, and it's really strange. We collected $58 more this month than we did the month last year, which is just pretty flat, I guess is the best way to put that, about as flat as you can get. Of course, we projected no increase over and above last year's revenue for the last few months. And the bottom line, you'll see, we project we're going to collect $20,391,494 by the end of this year. And so that will be $136,000 above what we had collected the year before. But we're going to be about, you know, 68% of what we budgeted, .68% over what we collected the year before, which I'll show you in a moment, is going to be under what we, of course, budgeted for the year. This, I think, is a good chart that really shows you what has happened this first year. We have all the sources of revenue in this left side for our general fund. The first column is what we budgeted. The second column is our year-to-date collections through the mid-year, year-to-date percentage to the budget of collections, and then what our year-end estimate is going to be for the next months, and then a summary on the end. So property tax, we're having a really good year on property tax collections. So, property tax, we're having a really good year on property tax collections. We budgeted $19,001,02 to come in, and we've already collected 97.5% of that number right now. Of course, most of that money comes in, you know, in the first part of the budget year is the reason that is so high, but we're estimating we're gonna end the year with $19,443, which is $341,000 above what we budgeted, and it's a really good number. And the reason for that is we've had some really good delinquent tax collections this year. Of course, we...
Excuse me, David, that was carryover from maybe...
These are delinquent collections, people hadn't paid their taxes, and of course, we have...
But I mean, when they're delinquent, they could've been carried over from...
Previous years, yes, sir. And of course, we have a firm that collects those back taxes for us, and so that's really helped us this year.
The year-to-date you have up there, now that's just six months?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Right. Sales tax, you can see here where we're gonna be down. We've collected year-to-date $10,352, which is right at 50%. That's kind of really where we should be. However, we're gonna end the year $318,000 down from what we had budgeted because of the flattening of the sales tax. The other taxes you can see, and fees and fines, we're doing well. Might point out to you, on the fines, we're gonna collect an extra $200,000 from what we budgeted, and then miscellaneous revenue and other, and the transfers. So, the bottom line on this one, the total revenue, you can see at the bottom in the bold, we've collected 67.5% of our revenue stream at mid-year, which is very good, and we feel like we're gonna end the year with a surplus in general fund revenues of $320,029. Expenditure side on the general fund, we're at 51.3%, which we're right on track halfway through the year, and we are estimating we're going to spend $370,000 less than what we budgeted for on expenditure side, so that's gonna give us a net year-end surplus of nearly $700,000 in the general fund. So, I really think we're doing well. It is troubling that the sales tax has flattened out like it has, but we do have some room there, you know, for the end of the year. If it'll just stay flat, then we feel like we'll have a surplus, but...
Mr. Willard, I might just point out, though, that is heavily dependent on that sales tax number, that year-end surplus, so before any of us run out to go spend some money, we better wait till the end of the year to see if that number really happens, so...
Yeah, it's a projection, but it's, and we, of course, monitor that every month, and we'll adjust our, we will adjust our expenses to meet that, and we certainly will come in under budget, under, we won't, we won't spend more than we take in by the end of the year. Okay? Here's the summary on the general fund. We started October the 1st with a fund balance of $16,411. There are the revenues we are expecting to collect. We're going to spend $62,696,196. Now, let me tell you, that is, includes the budget amendment for the George Ritchie Road, the $3 million on that, and also the rodeo arena expenditures. So, that's why those expenditures are above the revenue, because we appropriated fund balances for those. So, our ending fund balance will be $12,772. And then, of course, we have to show liabilities there that we hold out of our fund balance for the OPEB and the firefighter pension liabilities. That number's $3,193, so we're projecting a fund balance to the end of this year of $9,578, which is a 15.28% fund balance. And, of course, council has set a policy to have a 10% base on the fund balance, so the difference between the 15.28 and the 10% is $3,309,12 of unencumbered reserve fund in the, in the general fund balance. On the water side, another important piece of our city budget, we had a beginning fund balance of $8,200,000. Our revenues, we're predicting $31,504,404, with expenditures slightly under that, so we're projecting an ending fund balance of 27.92%, which is $8.66 million less, and I'm really proud of this, and want to thank Keith Bonds and his people and council for this also, but you remember last budget year, we got council approval to start a capital reserve fund for future capital projects, and you know, we've had to raise our water rates the last two or three years, and part of the reason to do that was to hopefully build up a cash reserve where we could start cash funding some projects in the future instead of selling, you know, revenue bonds. So, we moved over $2.2 million out of the reserve fund this year, and it's in a future capital reserve fund, and so, and then we've also got liabilities in the water side, but we're gonna have an ending fund balance of 18.7% at the end of the year. And of course, on the water and sewer fund, you've set a 15% requirement on the, the fund balance requirement, so that number will have $1,559 of reserve over the 15% requirement by the end of the year. So, you know, if council wanted to transfer some more money into that reserve fund at the end of this budget year, part of that 1.5, you certainly could do that, and we can keep building the, the reserve fund up. Now, this is, the revenue side on, the expenditures are pretty well set and fixed, and we pretty well know what they are. The revenue side in the water business, of course, it can be volatile. If we have a really dry summer, those revenues could go up. If it's a really wet summer, you know, we've got some, there's some volatility there in those revenue side, but we feel pretty comfortable that we'll be able to make that.
Let me ask a question, Mr. Willard. If, if that, you know, fund balance, I mean, if these numbers actually, you know, pan out, would we maybe consider looking at, and I'm kind of directing this at Keith, over the next six months, I mean, we know about the water line ruptures and a lot of things, would, could some of that money be used as long as, you know, we maintain the integrity of that fund balance of 15%? Could some of that extra 1.5 be used to look at some of these other projects we have as far as infrastructure projects, water line stuff? Okay. I think we might be thinking about that if this does, you know, turn out to be a reality.
Yeah, it's unencumbered reserve, so council could do a project with it or save it or whatever you choose to do.
But I think, I think everybody's comfortable, staff's comfortable with at least 15%, so if these numbers actually materialize, then that would give us an opportunity to continue to upgrade some of the water line infrastructure that we got, especially in some of the old areas of the city. Okay.
Final thing on the water, I think all of our reservoirs are full. Is that right, Mr. Bonds? And after last summer, that's really good news, and we ought all be thankful for that, that we, East Texas and Longview in particular, we're really blessed with water sources, and a lot of our brethren out in West Texas aren't that fortunate, so we...
Hey, they need to give us a call.
Trade oil for, oil for water, right?
Uh-uh, we don't want the oil, we want the water. Yeah.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Questions, Mr. Willard? Go ahead, Rich.
Mr. Willard, I wanted to compliment you and your staff. You done a really fine job again this year. I'm, I'm sure you're really proud to be able to come in front of the council and say the things you've said, and I know you give credit to the staff that you work with, you've done that many times before, but I also want to give you credit for being a fine leader and doing a good job for our city.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that, and I do have a great staff. They're the ones that, you know, that do it, make it happen, and so, thank you, though.
Mr. Willard, Mr. Willard came into his position understanding about the yellow, the number yellow, the number two yellow pencil, and, you know, Mr. Willard's background has really done us well in terms of managing to spend what we take in, but I just want to make a comment in, in council and for the community. You know, we looked at appraised values today that came out in the paper, and we're looking at being under about $200 million versus last year. That equates to about $1.2 million short, okay, versus last year. Now, I know, we always know what happens when we actually hit the final appraised values, that changes, but the, this, this, the next six months is challenging because of what's happening with sales tax, but this budget, this year's budget is gonna be a very, it's gonna be a very difficult budget if we start off with that kind of shortfall. So, I want to make sure council has what the dates are for these meetings, council? If, if there's something that really should be considered imperative as far as meetings not missed, it's this list of meetings. Besides public safety, we probably have no other larger responsibility than the fiduciary responsibility of taxpayer dollars, and I want to stress to each council member now that, look at these dates, please don't schedule something around these dates if at all possible, okay? We've got plenty of time to get our schedules together, but we need, we need to work as a, as a team here because we're gonna have a difficult, we could have a difficult budget time, and we need everybody's input, okay? Is that fair? Okay. Any other questions? All right, then we'll move to the consent agenda. Council, that's a pretty big consent agenda. Is there any item that council would like to pull for separate consideration? If not, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. We'll move to our zoning and public hearing items. Item A, a public hearing will be held to consider application Z1202. We have Mr. Shirley here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Dean, members of council, Mr. Willard. Excuse me. The applicant, Mr. Van Dusen, is requesting a rezone from agriculture to general retail. This is on a parcel of land north of Hawkins Parkway. It's currently zoned agriculture. The future land use map does designate this for medium intensity business and medium density residential. Planning and zoning commission and staff do recommend approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council questions. This item requires a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. I do not have any speaker cards on this item. Is there anyone here today in the audience that would like to speak to this matter? If not, the public hearing is closed. May I have a motion on zoning item A? I have a motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Zoning item B, a public hearing to consider application PD12-06. Mr. Shirley?
Thank you, Mayor Dean. The applicant is requesting to rezone from single-family two to planned development, general retail, with site plan approval to follow in the future. This is very similar to a request that was approved last month at council. It's located on the corner of Airline and Clay Street that has Loop 281 frontage. This is just an area, this is just a preliminary zoning to allow them to market the property so that this area can redevelop into retail, very similar to the opposite end of Clay Street along where Nukes is, just continue that redevelopment of Loop 281 frontage. Planning and zoning commission and staff recommend approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions on this item? Council, this item requires a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Do not have any speaker cards. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak to this matter? If not being so, the public hearing is closed. May I have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Mr. Shirley, thank you very much. Okay, council, action items. Item A, to consider resolution awarding a contract to and authorizing and directing the city manager or his designee to execute the necessary documents with RVP construction. Mr. Bonds?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is one of our projects from the 2011 bond election. It's the sidewalk, we call it the 2011 sidewalk improvements on Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and East Birdsong Street. It's a 18,000 feet of four-foot wide sidewalk. It'll be fully handicap accessible, and as I said, the funding is made available from the general obligation bonds from the sale of those bonds that voters approved in May of 11. You might notice that the red line here are the proposed sidewalks. On the very northern end, there's some gaps in that red line. That's because there's some existing sidewalk along MLK that we feel like are good enough to leave in place, allowed us to extend it all the way to I-20 access road. We do have a small section of the sidewalk that's gonna be on the west side of MLK in front of the Red Oak Baptist Church. The remainder of it is all on the east side, and the Birdsong sidewalk is all on the south side. As Dr. Mayor said, we had RVP construction with Marshals, the low bid at $610,779.36. We had five bidders in all. At this time, I'd like to go over maybe the rest of the projects, if you would like an update. This is the overall list, $52.6 million. This is a timeline, kind of a project timeline that we use. The dark vertical line is, will represent May of 2012 here, and the diamonds represent where we are in each one of the projects. The two that we have completed are the High Street and MLK Junior Repave Street. So, the green represents our design efforts, and yellow is what we think is gonna take us to acquire right of way, red being construction. So, old dirt streets were done in four different phases. We're almost finished with the first phase, and we're about to start bidding for the downtown Green Street reconstruction, and Hollybrook we're acquiring right of way. All the rest of them are just beginning in design, so...
Okay. Questions? Mr. Allen?
On the sidewalk construction, what was a budgeted amount when we sold the bonds?
$670.
Oh, down to the bottom.
It's the bottom one, right?
So, we're a little bit under that?
Right.
And this is for the full project, the 610?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. Go back to the, the bidders on this.
Okay.
And I see several Longview companies, or at least a couple, and they were the, actually, they were the highest. Is, is there any, because I know several of these typically are very competitive, there's just their volume of work right now that...
Yeah, Xcel has lots of projects with us, East Texas Bridge has one with us, so the two from Longview.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'd just like to make a comment. I think I've already told you privately that I was real satisfied with the two projects that have been completed. The contractor done an excellent job, and I just wanted to tell you publicly that they have done an excellent job, and I hope the rest of the projects turn out like those two did.
Well, thank you.
Good deal. Which two? Which two? Excuse me.
The High Street and the MLK.
Repaves.
Those projects turned out real good.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, we need a motion?
So, move.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, and next item is a resolution accepting a proposal, authorizing, directing the city manager or his designee to execute documents regarding the, okay, go ahead, Mr. Bonds. They give me all this stuff to read, and he gets up there and repeats it.
I did not write all that for you, but this is for the new compost building, which is going to include the relocation of our compost operations. We're really excited about this. We have obtained the services of HGR, General Contractors, they're gonna be the construction manager, and they have provided us with a maximum guaranteed price not to exceed $111,045.60, which will include a building, all the utilities, and the parking. I've got location of that. I don't know if you knew where the old compost facility was, but it's very difficult to get to, sandwiched between our old landfill and the wastewater treatment plant, but this one, hopefully, will be much easier for our citizens to get to. It'll be at the southern end of Swinging Bridge Road, just past our Sabine Water Treatment Plant, and the red dot here would represent where that is, would be. Just an artist's rendering of what the, the building will look like, and not a big building, but it'll be very serviceable for what we're gonna be doing. At this time, I want to turn the presentation over to Dave Wimberly, who is our compost coordinator. He's gonna tell you all you want to know about compost.
Appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about our compost site. What you're looking at now is our current compost site, and like Keith said, it's between the old landfill and the wastewater treatment plant. This is a 20-acre site. The new site that we're, we're selecting is a 28-acre site, which basically gives us 40% more usable area.